Good evening, I will call the meeting to order. At this time, I will ask Councilman Dunn to say the invocation. If you will please rise for that and remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to come out this evening and be active in our community, the council members and also the citizens that have taken a pride in the community to come out and help make this a better town for us to live in. And please be with everyone across the world as we are in such times that have so much turmoil in them, and please let it be a quick resolve to all the world issues that are going on today. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. Do we have any changes to the agenda? There are some known changes to the agenda. One is to remove public hearing number two, which is CUP 16-05 Cannon Farm LLC. That was at the request of their attorneys. Then to add to business item number four, consideration and approval of a scope of work with Sanford-Holzhauser for implementation of the Strategic Economic Development Update Action items. The third item is to add to the business item number five, consideration and approval of the placement of a no U-turn sign on Outlet Center Drive and Smithfield Crossings Drive and the placement of Bollards. And then item number four is to add a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, got 11A3, to consult with our town attorney. Are there any other additions?
I just got a question on the consent agenda number four. Is that what we took off last month?
No.
That's not what we took off?
And also I need to add that the public hearing that was on for tonight, CUP 16-05 for the solar farm, will come back up next month. Any other additions, corrections to the agenda? Here none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we will move right into citizens' comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak, feel free to come forward. We do have some individuals who have signed in, so I will call upon them now in the order. Do I have Alicia Bizzle? Is Bizzle on? You're first up. I will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes if possible, please.
I'm coming forward again, I know it must seem like I'm beating a dead horse, but to discuss the water issue again, because the last meeting that we had, I recall, was at JCC, and we talked about the way the water stands up down in, near the Housing Development, Housing Authority and the JCC area, the park area. The last big rain that we had, Martin Luther King was almost flooded. I don't know if it's a drainage that needs to be really cleared out of what, but that road was flooded and the little area in between Martin Luther King and Furlong Drive, it was flooded. It was like a little river forming back there, and then again, the park was flooded. So I know that it was stated that the last time it rained, that everything had been cleared, that there was an issue behind Johnston Tech and everything had been cleared, but I don't know how that appears within Furlong Drive, Martin Luther King, because it's really starting to stand up. Because we have the park on the side of the road, there is no driveways or whatever for us, it's becoming a serious issue, because there's my own little motor transportation and I don't want my car to be flooded out.
Mr. Mayor, would you...
Yeah. I'll try to address your concerns just very quickly. During the last bad rainstorm, and that's, I don't remember how many inches, but several inches all in a very short period of time, so it did flood several areas in town. That particular area was brought to my attention during the rainstorm by Councilman Lee. Lenny Branch, our Public Works Director, actually went out in the rain to see what the problem was, and we did locate a problem actually on the far side of Interstate 95, where the water goes off, there was a beaver dam on that side. It was DOT's responsibility to keep that clean. And we contacted DOT, they worked very well with us, they cleaned all that out. We believe we have all the drainage, as far as we can go now, cleaned out. But it was backed up, you're absolutely right. We cleaned all the areas that were our responsibility, but we didn't go to the other side of 95 to make sure it was cleaned out. The rain showed that it was not. It has been done. I believe, Lenny, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, we think we have the thing fixed. But I appreciate you bringing it to our attention again, give us an opportunity to address it and explain what went on there.
Okay.
And I have a lot of confidence that that should take care of it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bizzle. Next up, we have Veronica, is it Ari? Or Avery? Veronica Avery?
We've still talked to the mayor about it.
Alright, you say you already have your issue taken care of. Alright, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Man. Okay, next up is Marvin Burke. Mr. Burke is the new athletic director at Smithfield-Selma High School. Glad to have you here tonight, Mr. Burke. I really appreciate you coming. You've been on the job how many days?
Let me look at my watch. Two days.
Two days, and you're already out visiting us and getting to know us, so I want to say thank you for coming out this evening, and we certainly do appreciate it, so I'll turn it over to you.
I appreciate it, everybody. The opportunity to come out and introduce myself, Marvin Burke, athletic director at Triple S, and I expect to see every individual in this room at a Triple S game, sporting event this year. Now I made eye contact with everybody, I know your face. I might not got your name yet, but at least I know your face, so I expect to see you at every game this year at Triple S, even though if you don't coach at Triple S, you coach at Clayton, but I expect to see you at a Triple S game this year, and I expect to want the support from everybody. I'm here to support the community, and I want the community to also support us. Thank you.
So, real quick, Marvin, can you give us a little bit about your background and so forth?
My name is Marvin Burke. I went to East Carolina University, I'm originally from Jacksonville, Florida. I played football at East Carolina University under Steve Logan, one of the best institutions in North Carolina, shall I say? I wanted to add that in. But I've been teaching for eighteen, sixteen years, I've been coaching for eighteen years. I started off coaching middle school, right out of college. I had a passion to help kids, and that's just been my driving force to continue to teach, because you know you don't teach for the money. You know, we teach to help kids. And I was once one of those bad kids, and there was a coach that saved my life. And also, I wanted to repay other kids back the same gratitude that was given to me. And now that I have the opportunity in an AD position, now I own to help football kids, but I can help every kid in the sports program and also help the community as well to grow and make sure our kids are being able to live the tradition amongst everybody else. So I thank you and giving me the opportunity to speak in front of everybody and everybody to see me come out. If you've got any questions about Triple S and want to know what we're doing, feel free to contact me at the school, I'm open, my office door is always open. Sit down and let me know what I need to know about Triple S, because I'm from Florida. I just came from Raleigh, I was at Southeast Raleigh teaching, and I don't know nothing about Triple S. So inform me. I want to be very knowledgeable, I'm a sponge. I call myself SpongeBob SquarePants. Okay? Because I want to soak, I want to soak everything in, but I also want to make sure that I tie the community back into the school and the school back into the community. And that's my main goal going in, and that's the same thing I meant when I met with all my coaches, that's what I told them. We need to get the school back into the community. The community shouldn't have to come to us, we should come to them, and make sure that we're doing what we need to do to support our community, because that's who's going to support us. Thank you.
Well, thanks again for coming this evening, and if there's anything that we can do, please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, I've known Marvin the last couple of years, he worked at Southeast Raleigh High School, and he used to run the score clock, so if anybody know anything about Southeast girls' basketball, they're pretty good. So I used to always try to, you know, con him to just, "Run the clock, run the clock." If I call timeout, run the clock, run the clock. Just let us get out of here. But I do welcome you to Smithfield-Selma High School, and you'll have some great community support. As I say, you know, I just work at Clayton High School, I live in Smithfield, I'm a Triple S graduate, I'm a blue and gold tonight, but I'm just here to say you've got my support also.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And thank you all for having me out and allowing me, giving me the time to introduce myself to everybody, and I look forward to working with everybody in this room. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Nixon?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to stand before you this evening, first of all, to thank you all for your support of the Fund in the Park event at Smith Collins Park, which was held on July 16th this year. Without your support, it would not have been possible. I'd also like to thank several of the town employees that were very, very instrumental in supporting this East Smithfield venture. First of all, I'd like to thank Enron Police Chief Keith Powell and the Smithfield Police Department, also Lieutenant Brian Branovich for their support and partnering with us in the Fund in the Park. Secondly, Lenny, Lenny Branch, and your department, Public Works Department, you guys were awesome, and we thank you personally for what you did. Gary Johnson, I saw Daryl, Dale someplace in here, I thought. Dale Ham, without you guys' support, it definitely would not have been the event that it was, so thank you all very much. And then lastly, I'd like to thank our town clerk here, Shannon Williams, and the town admin staff for all of their support that they did. Most of these folks personally came out and actually got involved in the Fund in the Park event, which we truly, truly, truly say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And we look forward to working with you next year. Who did we forget? How could I forget? Chief Blanton, the big red fire truck. Thank you, sir. Again, you know, the partnership that we have with the town of Smithfield is immeasurable. And everyone that attended truly, truly enjoyed themselves, it was a successful back-to-school event, the kids received the supplies that they needed to start that first day of school. So thank you all for all you do.
That's it? Thank you, Dunn. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I will call Ms. Foye up, Jamie Foye, and her helper, James.
Hi, my name is Jamie Foye. I'm a mom of three, this is James, he's my oldest son, he's a first grader at South Smithfield Elementary, and we're here to invite everyone in the room tonight and in the community, especially the town council members and Mr. Mayor, to our back-to-school bonanza that's going to be held at South Smithfield Elementary this Friday, August the 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00. I think a lot of times, the negative aspects of things in our schools drown out the positive, so what we're here to do is highlight the positive aspects that go on in Smithfield schools. And there are a ton of positive aspects and positive impacts that every single school in Smithfield is making. James, if you want to hand those invitations out, yeah? A lot of times, the best way to see the positive impacts is to actually come out, get involved in the events. A professor in pharmacy school ended every single lecture making sure that he told us the best way to have the biggest impact was to get involved, to get out into the trenches, to get into the community. So I really urge you guys, I urge you guys to not just come out to this event, come out to this event as a starter, but come out to all different kinds of events that the schools are holding this year. You can like Facebook pages, you can follow schools on Twitter, there are great ways to get involved and to know about the activities and the positive impacts that our schools are making. When you come out to the event Friday night, visit with the kids, meet the parents, talk to the teachers, ask questions, ask about the new programs that they're implementing in the schools this year, ask about our pod time, ask about our global garden, ask about our intersection courses, ask about the coding classes that James has taken as a kindergartner. There are just a lot of things that I think aren't highlighted in the schools, and I want you guys to come out and just get to know the teachers, get to know what we really do as a, well, I'm not a teacher, but get to know what the schools really do to impact the community. Community, come out, get involved, we can't do this without your support. So come out, and again, it's going to be Friday at the South Smithfield Elementary School on the playground in the cafeteria. They're going to have music, they're going to have food, there's going to be snow cones, free snow cones for the kids, bounce houses, there's also going to be free books and resources on a first-come-first-served basis, so get there early, 5:00 to 7:00. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, Jamie. And James, great job. Is there anyone else who would like to come speak?
Hello, I'm Jessica Davis, president of the Junior Women's League of Smithfield. We have a special event coming up that's on your consent agenda tonight, and I wanted to take this time to put a face with the organization, as we're hoping to do many, many things here in Smithfield. I wanted to tell everyone, especially town council, what we are, we're a nonprofit organization of women, we're committed to promoting volunteerism in the community and impacting that change to the efforts of our members. This past year, we had 119 members and gave over 942 hours of community service back to Johnston County. We also raised $10,000 for the partnership of children through our first annual fundraiser, Big Night Out. As you can see on the agenda, we have not stopped, we are currently planning for our Touch a Truck event to be held in the fall, hopefully November 12th of this year, and that's a community impact fundraiser, any proceeds will go towards the Boys and Girls Clubs of Johnston County. And it's really just an opportunity for children to engage with public service, officers, just climb on trucks, experience big rigs, fire trucks, police cars, anything that they see that they're interested in that they may not always get to touch. It provides them a safe opportunity to do that, to learn about the cars, but also to bring some economic development, hopefully, back to downtown Smithfield. So I would just like to take this time to thank you in advance for your support, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you, and seeing everyone here tonight at the event. It is a free event also for our community, so bring your children, bring your grandchildren, and we look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, real quick, how many members do you guys have roughly?
In our first year, we had around 119 members, and we are gearing up for our second service year, so we're hoping that that number will continue to grow.
So I think that's just absolutely outstanding and incredible, I mean, first-year organization with 119 ladies throughout the county who really, really have a desire and a passion to getting involved with our community. So I want to say personally, thank you, please extend my thanks to your board, my wife is a part of that organization, I know Councilman Ashley attended the Big Night Out and was the big winner, he won every, I think he, how many drawings did you win that night?
I won two of them.
Oh, good, very good.
Have you gotten your retiree?
I do not have any yet.
Yeah, so, but anyway, I did want to say, again, thank you for the involvement in the community and keep it up.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone's support, we were amazed, we sold out, had over 375 tickets sold to that event, we were just blown away by the support of this community. What a great community we live in, so thank you.
Okay, any...
I wanted to say something too. My daughter's in that organization, and that is, has an element of economic and community development too, because when young people are going to move to a town, they want to know if there are activities and organizations they can be a part of and get involved with. So what you're doing has many, many benefits and many different avenues, so thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in your citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and with that, the Touch a Truck special event has been approved. Okay, we'll move into business items. Our first business item this evening is consideration and approval to enter into an agreement with Expert Global Services to provide online utility bill payment services. I will turn it over to Mr. Silas, our finance director.
Mayor, councilman, as you are aware, the town currently has online bill pay. We got it roughly two years ago with a company called NCO. They charge a $2.45 per transaction to pay online with a limit of $700. Shortly after contracting with NCO, the laws changed for them in that they could no longer charge us that transaction fee. It was because of the type of company they were, their primary business, excuse me. So for practically two years, our customers have enjoyed the convenience of online bill pay, free of charge. That contract expires in September of this year, although the company couldn't charge, they did honor their agreement with us, and have lost money on the town for roughly two years. So, but that's just good business. They could have canceled the contract, they could have sold it out from under them to a company that would have charged us. Nonetheless, that contract again expires in September, so we started our search for a replacement company. NCO, in the meantime, had merged, if you will, with another company called EGS, so I contacted EGS to see if they had a continued interest in doing business with us. They were very eager to maintain the town's business. I have a chart for you that outline the eight companies or so that I contacted, and EGS is the lowest of the eight that were contacted. On average, the transaction fee would run about $4.25 per transaction. So they have agreed to maintain the website link on our website at a cost of $3 per transaction. Initially, we provided you with their contract, there were a couple items in that contract that I wanted to negotiate with them, but wasn't sure if we could, so we gave you their original contract. You were handed out just before the meeting tonight, a revised contract with them. I just want to highlight a couple things that changed in the revised contract, and they're to the town's benefit. On page 11 of the contract, under section A1, it mentions a charge to the town, let me reword that, it mentions how much money they need to make a month to remain profitable. So they need to earn off of the town $1,500 a month. That statement in the contract is new. And in their original agreement, they gave us 90 days to reach that threshold. To break that down for you, at $3 per transaction, they needed 500 customers to visit our website and pay through online bill pay. At last count, we were averaging roughly 800 transactions per month. Mind you, it's free, and that probably motivated more users. So they gave us 90 days to reach that threshold, I did ask for a longer period, and they agreed to 150 days or five months for us to reach that threshold. I then asked, "Well, what if we don't reach the threshold?" Now mind you, if we had 400 transactions, they've gotten $1,200, and the town would only be liable for 100 more. So it would be very unusual that we would ever be responsible for the full $1,500 per month, it's just a difference if we did not reach their magic number of 500. So then I went a little farther, and I asked if indeed we didn't reach that threshold and the town didn't want to pay, could we exit their contract? And they honored that request. So on page one of the contract, under item two, 2.4, they are giving us the option of exiting the contract with 120-day notice. So this is outstanding contract, they were very agreeable with the town, and it is my recommendation that we renew for an additional two years with this company, EGS. Excuse me. Any questions?
Questions for Greg?
So the customer, person using, if I opt to use online bill pay, I pay the transaction charge, not the town's?
That's correct, that's the way I'm presenting it, and that's the way it was initially. And on the front end, I think even before they stopped charging, we were up to around 350 users per month, and it's been growing every month.
People who pay online, I assume, use a credit card or a debit card or something like that. We have an additional fee that the town pays for that service?
With this particular contract, the customer's paying all of the charge, what the town gets is 100% of the transaction. When we take credit cards face-to-face at our collection windows, we get, let me reword that, the bank gets a percentage of every transaction. It's just the cost of doing business in the 21st century. So with online bill pay, the town will get 100% of the utility bill, as opposed to...
And I assume that's 2% or 3%, or whatever the figure is for credit card service?
It varies, but on average, you're correct, there are over 300 different credit card types, which makes pricing very difficult for companies on the front end, because they don't know which type of credit cards they're being presented.
So if someone were to come in and had a $10,000 bill, pay with a credit card, it would cost us that 2% or 3% of that $10,000 or $15,000 or $20,000 bill?
That's correct, and we have one or two customers with the town that have enormous bills, and they pay by credit card.
Well, the reason I brought that up, I know we've had some conversation in the past about possibly addressing that issue and... about possibly addressing that issue and perhaps charging, I noticed this has a threshold of seven hundred dollars. Perhaps we need to review some type of a charge for people who are charging large amount to us, because that's a pretty substantial dollar figure.
It is, but at this time, our hands are bound. We cannot charge face-to-face customers a transaction fee. The rules changed for private commercial businesses back in two thousand thirteen. So, retailers today have the right to charge customers that pay by credit card a transaction fee. Most do not do it. The town cannot, because our rates are special rates to start with, and as such, the contracts do not allow us to charge face-to-face transaction fees to customers. By the credit card agreement.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this request.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item of business is consideration and approval to purchase the second sludge press. I'll turn it over to Ted.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you're aware, the, our capital improvement plan, the water plan included the purchase of a sludge press for improving the sludge, or improving the process by which we can dry the sludge and then have it disposed of. So, we went to procure the first sludge press shortly after the, this year, the beginning of the year in January, it was advertised. We brought back exactly one bid, and by North Carolina law, we can't accept the one bid. So, we returned it sealed and rebid it. Again, one bid was received on the second bid. So, we are allowed to act upon that, and we did. The council approved the measure back in the spring. The sludge press was purchased. We're currently, it was put on order, and we're currently waiting for it to arrive. It should be here by the end of this month, and we are currently receiving bids now for the installation of this press. Part of our budgetary year that we just went through is the addition of a second press. The second press would provide reliability, redundancy, and additional capacity to treat sludge. So, included, what I'd like to point out, and you have in your packet, is that first bid that we did accept in the spring also had a line item in it for the purchase of a second press if desired. That second press cost on that line item is well within the current approved budget that we have for this coming year for the purchase of the second press. Due to the history we had and the scarcity of bids, and we only had one, one return, the public utilities department would like to purchase that second press at this time for the line item price that was in the approved first bid, which is still valid, because it has only been three or four months since we had it. The first, the manufacturer of the first press has agreed to hold that price that was submitted at that time. So, again, I point out, the second press is well within the approved budget that we just approved four weeks ago. The advantages to doing it this way is we may be, maybe, and I will stress, maybe possible to install the second press along with the first press, thereby saving some installation costs. You wouldn't have to pay a contractor to remobilize, for example. The town does not need to re-advertise. We already have an approved bid, and it's still valid. The town does not need engineering design fees. We don't need to write specifications for the new press, because the second one fits the first one. It, it's compatible. It's made by the same manufacturer, and the first press operation had an ability to add the second. So, again, we save money. So, in summary, our, our second press already meets the specifications, it's already in an approved bid, and it's already under budget. Any questions you gentlemen might have?
Any questions? Ted?
This may not be wrong, but if you dry sludge out and you spread it on land, is it, is the sole quality that can hold the function, or is it just?
No, there's, there's certain, there's, there are approved disposers, land applicators, they can do that. And the fact that we're drying it, it's a lot cheaper to haul and to dispose of than the wet, and that's, that was the whole purpose of the, the process.
It's basically bad dirt.
It's bad, yes, it's bad dirt.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve this request.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Business item number three, consideration and approval to adopt the wayfinding system. I'll turn it over to Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you give me just a second here, I would appreciate it. Okay, very quickly here, Donna Bayla-Taylor is here. I asked her to come so that she can answer any questions she might have from the Visitors' Bureau. Back in two thousand fourteen, the Visitors' Bureau undertook a study for wayfinding for the town of Smithfield. That was presented to you some time ago, or presented to the council some time ago. We have not acted on it. Tonight, I'm asking you to act on it, to adopt it as Smithfield's wayfinding mechanism, and to move forward with the purchase of gateway signage, both on each side of seventy as well as each side of three oh one. Wayfinding in itself is a way for people to find their way to our most used, most sought-after locations in town, be it the hospital, the college, the Shrack, Ava Gardner Museum, any area that has a whole lot of tourism or people coming to visit. Our downtown area is an example, coming off ninety-five, our outlet centers, obviously. Some of the things that we're asking you to do is to adopt this signage structure. What you see here on the far left is the Gateway Monumental sign. Those are the ones that we are asking to be placed on each end of Highway seventy, both west and east, as you come off ninety-five. The third sign in the row, it says downtown, that's what we would also be using downtown, but we would change the logo to say Smithfield, just like the gateway sign, and use those for each end of Highway three oh one as you come in, into town, from the north and the south. That would be step one. Later steps would include some of the signage that you see on the bottom and on the, on the sides, that would, again, wayfind to specific locations. This is a better picture of the Monumental Gateway sign that we'll be looking to put on each side of seventy. There's a lot of history and development that went into this sign. If you want to know how they came about, the stones and, and the river that runs through it and the design itself, Donna would be in a better position to answer those questions. I can tell you that involved in this, the creation of this wayfinding system was not only the Visitors' Bureau, but also Downtown Smithfield Development, our own Appearance Commission, and our own town staff. Paul Embler is here, and he was part of that committee that worked on that and agreed to these designs. This, again, would be the smaller gateway sign that would go on each side of three oh one, as well as coming into the downtown area from each end of seventy. These are better pictures of the Trailblazer signs that would be put around town. This would be a later, later phase, to better identify the library, things like the New Swill Theater, Ava Gardner, we already talked about, the college, the hospital, key areas like the Outlet Center, where people come to Smithfield to do business, as well as to work and play. These are, again, some examples of the sample Trailblazer signs without the color, locating Town Hall, the Police Department, Greenway, Boat Ramp. Key areas, again, in Muscati, or in Smithfield that we need to identify to get people to come to our area. All you have to do is drive around out by the Crossroads Project to see how confusing our sign system is. Economic development is a big issue. We're going to later talk about another, another piece of that puzzle. This is one piece of that puzzle. One thing that we've identified is very important is to beautify our gateways into our community, and this is one step to further that goal. That's it in a nutshell. As far as financing goes and funding goes to this project, we have tourism money that is, the town of Smithfield's money that is held by the Visitors' Bureau. That's two percent of the occupancy tax that comes in as revenue into our community. And we can use that money pretty much as we choose, as long as it's a tourism-related issue. There's about, a little over a hundred thousand dollars sitting in that fund right now. I'm asking to allocate half of that, about fifty thousand dollars, to the four signs that I spoke of on three oh one and, and seventy, so that we can move this project forward, and then later come back to you with requests to continue this project and further use that money that is held by the Visitors' Bureau for this project. And I'd entertain any questions, or Donna would be glad to step up here as well and answer any questions she might have.
I, I have a question for you, Mike.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that the I-95 interchange is getting ready to be redone, including the bridge, and I think I'm right in saying it's gonna be done this fiscal year. It was, it was on the drawing board to be done this fiscal year, so there, what I would ask is that town work to make sure that, before we put a sign out there on I-95, that we make sure it is cohesive to the plans to redo that interchange.
Thank you for bringing that up. I failed to discuss that issue, but that is one that we're already taking under consideration. Paul Embler has been talking to the DOT about just that issue to make sure that we don't conflict with anything that they're doing out there. Last thing we want to do is invest in a sign, have to take it out and put it back again. So, we will make certain that that does not, does not happen.
I, I have two questions.
Sure.
First one, and, first one relates to the gateway signs, and that is, you know, we have the sign out here. Is there, is there gonna be any cost to the town to acquire easement rights or property rights on which to place the sign?
We're working with DOT right now. We're hoping to be able to put them in the right-of-way that we currently have. We're also working with DOT, if we need to, to acquire a new right-of-way that they possess with us, but we're not looking to acquire any personal property to put up the sign.
Second question was on the other side. Who determines what is put on that sign, the locations to be set forth on the side?
As far as the, the signs that move people to a particular location?
Yes.
Well, that would be what we would bring back to you. I would make that final decision as to what needs to come in front of you. We would work with the Appearance Commission, with the Visitors' Bureau, with the downtown, if it's a downtown issue, and we would bring those issues back to you in, in phases. We would say, this is what we think we need to put up, and then we would present that in another, another presentation for approval.
Any other questions?
These gateway signs, are they gonna be in addition to what we have on the east and the west side, or are they gonna take the place of these?
They would be in place of those. Those signs would be removed.
And it also says in phase two is when they're gonna do the monument, but we're gonna actually...
Well, we are moving a little bit different than what is in the packet.
So, it's come out of phase two and go into phase one for the...
Right.
Just wanted to make sure.
We, we believe that we should put in the, the gateway signs first.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I think it's, I think they look great. I'm excited about it, so certainly hope that we can move forward with this issue. I think it will certainly be a great addition to our town to have it.
And the signs look great, by the way.
They did a great job. I wish I could take credit for it, but I cannot. I know Paul and Sarah's here, and some people from the Appearance Commission, I see are here, and, and they all worked really hard on this project. They really did.
I move we approve the request.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is to adopt the plan as well as the proposed funding. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, business item number four, consideration and approval, the scope of work with Sanford Holshouser for implementation of the Strategic Economic Development Update Action Items. Going to be Ted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. I also have here, and when needed for assistance, is Rocky Lane. What I'm presenting before you tonight is a follow-up, as the manager just mentioned, with economic development. In two thousand four, the town had an economic development strategic plan performed by, through Electricities that Rocky was a part of, and again, in two thousand fourteen, council commissioned Sanford Holshouser with Rocky Lane to present an updated strategic plan. As a result of that, we, we've not forwarded that on at the pace, I believe, that most of us would, would like to. And during this current budget session, you approved funding to, to better and move forward our efforts on economic development within the town. So, I'm coming before you to find, to ask permission to contract with, with Rocky Lane and his company to help see this plan to fruition. They developed it, we had the confidence in it, I know everybody has a copy of it, and it is a great plan there, but there are many, many things there that are identified. And as I've spoken many times with Mayor Moore, we need to identify the things that we can check off of this list. We need to start getting some of these things into action and completed. One of those, as you can see, is the town website. We have done that, and that has been done through staff. I directed that, and now with tonight's approval of the, of the entryways, that is also another step going forward. I have worked with, with Rocky on several things to say, instead of these thirteen, fifteen items, what are some of the ones that we can identify now? We just discussed two of those. Another is a plan with, to engage our existing businesses and future businesses. But that would be a plan where we would go out with materials, thank the businesses, find out whether, what their interests are, where, where are we failing? Where, what are our successes? Where can we, where can we serve you better? So, that would be a nice, that would be the existing industry outreach program that you might see before you. Also, internal, external marketing campaign. I hear many times that we need to tell our story better. We need to tell our story. We have a lot of things here that we should be proud of, but we need to tell that better. So, in working, if, if this is approved, we would be working together, he would be an extension of me, he would be an advisor, he would be one who would help us keep our message consistent and moving forward. When we, he would also assist in reaching out to current partners that we have, like Electricities. And when he is speaking to them, he would be able to keep, if their marketing or branding is doing something, they're not going to change our image, they're not going to change what you saw before you with the wayfinding. That is more of the message. And so, we're looking for, or I'm asking for additional assistance there through Rocky, and primary reason for that is he developed this plan, and it's one that we all feel strong about. I don't believe, when we, we've spoken to other entities, myself, some of council, mayor, manager... I don't believe, when we've spoken to other entities, myself, some of council, mayor, manager, and we've come back, or we've received plans that cost a lot more money than what we're talking about here. A new plan and new work. We have the plan before us, so I'm asking for assistance to, to implement it. And I would like to offer Rocky for any questions, if you would.
Now, Tim, you said he would just be an extension of you representing our town. Will you also help identify areas of opportunity from other than shore? More ready than we-
Than I would, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I would add a comment that Councilman Ashley made just a little while ago about the women's club? Gender Women's Club League? One of the things in your study that we found that your, your cohorts that are in the working sectors, those age cohorts, those three, are, you're declining. Those age cohorts are declining. One of the things that we recommended is to monitor this. To make, you know, it's no calls for a long right now, but you need to monitor it. If you're gonna grow Smithfield, you need to start developing things that, that support and attract young couples. And your, your comment was right online. This young lady's organization and the positive things it does for Smithfield are something positive and will help attract young folks in those age cohorts that build your business. That, that is your employment base. That is your spending base. That is where your young folks come from that build your town and building. So that, your comments and the two that you already put on the board of moving forward in your economic development plan, and the Councilman's comments, and the young lady's good work with her club are positive things. But those are things that are nuggets that are in your plan that need to be grabbed and put forth. And as Tim just said, you need to let everybody know what you're doing. You need to know what folks, what you're focusing on and how you're gonna drive the train forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to add just a couple of things that Tim and Rocky had stated. I met with both of them last week. We talked about possibility of working more together to further the economic development plan that was produced back in 2014. For those of you who are scientific-minded, I, I mentioned this. Things in motion tend to stay in motion, and we're starting to move with economic development. We have a large company coming in, Clayton, and that is going to impact us, and we need to be prepared for that. We had a coalition of people go to Covington, Georgia recently, brought back some really great ideas and information. We have another one going to Morganton to bring back similar information. I think it was Vincent Van Gogh that said, "Great things are done by a series of small things being brought together." Economic development is, is that. We are trying to put together a bunch of small things. Wayfinding, this process for our economic development plan, our Economic Development Committee is working on things. We're putting a lot of things together. It's my job to make sure they're all working as one unit, and I'm trying to do that. And that's why I brought this, or I asked Tim to bring this to you tonight, so we can continue the inertia of moving forward. A lot of time, we, we have more time to get things done. I don't wanna hurry anything. But we're on a timeline here. If we really want to benefit from some of the changes that are occurring around us, if we want Smithfield to continue moving forward, we need to take every possible advantage that we can. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a-
I think a motion we approve the request is stated.
Have a motion to approve? A second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion.
Do, do the hours roll over? Under your contract, do the hours roll over? If you don't use that number of hours anticipated by the retainer, do they roll over?
Retainer is, the retainer is a day a month or a year. If he doesn't use me for, I mean, that's it. I mean, if he doesn't use me in any one month, which I don't think that'll happen, yes, it will roll over. But again, I don't expect that's gonna happen.
In addition to personal conversation back and forth as well, phone-
Well, the, the phone conversations, phone conversations, emails, all of that, you have that unlimited with me anyway. Because if you've looked at your scope of work for the strategic plan, we are so invested, we are so invested in our plans and what we do for our clients. And Smithfield has been a long time good client of ours. My company, so has Johnston County and Benson and Selma. But in your scope of work, in your contract with me to upgrade your strategic plan, it offers unlimited phone conversations, meetings in offices in Raleigh, and email conversations at no cost for the life of the plan. So what Tim and I have been doing back and forth, I mean, that's part of the strategic plan and what we give you when we're strategic planning. This is just taking it the next step. This is me actually going and physically doing, for example, incentives. We'll do best practices. If that's one of the things we decide to work on, we'll do our best practices on incentives that are offered by communities of your size in the area. That's me actually picking it up and running with it, as opposed to just telling Tim how to pick it up and run with it.
Tim, have you spoken to Mike about this and the group this meeting?
No, sir, I've not spoken to, to that group on this. We had, we have discussed it in the past that we were, that we were talking to Holshouser. But as far as getting anyone's approval or anything, no, sir, I've not done that or gotten their take on it. I know that we did discuss a few other companies and that, I'm not exactly sure where that went. Of course, I was not at, I believe, a couple of meetings. One meeting was canceled. But one that came back was, was pitching a new plan. And with this being month-to-month, that we could be able to terminate within 30 days?
Yeah, I, I, I don't foresee that happening. We've gotten in a row with Rocky already, but I would, I would hope that we would make sure that that group is a part of this so that we can use them to perpetuate our, our, our plan. And I assume that's what you're thinking. I just-
Absolutely, and we, we discussed that. We, we- Yes, yes, we've discussed that fully, that we would be engaging them, so. That, that's part of the plan here.
And I'm talking way out of school, Councilman, but I, in my discussions with Tim, I think you're talking about the local group that's meeting with economic development. Yes, that would be certainly addressed in the internal and external marketing program. And if you don't, if you don't have the engagement and support of everybody moving forward, you got everybody doing it. So by all means, I would, I would recommend that that, that group be brought into it.
I have a question. In your scope of work, it says you have a monthly activity report. Will we get a copy of that?
Yes, sir. I'll deliver it, unless you tell me differently. He's gonna be my point, uh, point of contact, and he's the person I'm gonna work through. So we will have a monthly report. They'll go to Tim. He can share it with you.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have a motion and a second to approve? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Second, gentlemen.
Business item number five is the consideration and approval of the placement of a no-U-turn sign on Outlet Center Drive and Smithfield Crossings Drive, and the placement of the bollards. I'll turn it over to the manager. Do you need this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, this is a request to place a no-U-turn sign and bollards up at Smithfield Crossings Drive and Outlet Center Drive. This is a place that you've, we've discussed before. We are seeing a significant rise in traffic accidents at this intersection. Last Christmas time, we put cones up in the white areas. Make this thing work in there. And we actually have them up now there as well to try to push traffic that is going this direction, far enough west, so they understand that there's traffic also coming here. What we're seeing is traffic turning off of this intersection, turning left right there, which is here. This traffic here going up the same direction, making a U-turn here, and getting sideswiped by this traffic, not realizing there's traffic coming up on their left heading in the same direction. It's an unusual intersection, unusual way to, to have the traffic flow. But because they wanna get to the restaurants, CC's Pizza and, and the different restaurants that are down in this area, Zaxby's, they're going here, making a U-turn, coming back this way, and then when traffic is moving in this direction, they're getting T-boned right there. Interim Chief is here. He ran some statistics of the accidents that we've had there. What were the numbers? 21 accidents so far this year. In 2016, how many in 2015? Six in 2015. So we've seen a dramatic increase in the accidents because of the way the traffic is picked up, as well as the opening of the roads. And so what we're asking for is to put a no-U-turn sign right there, bollards going out this way where the cones currently sit, try to push traffic down the road further before they can make a U-turn. Whether it'll make any difference or not, I'm not sure, but I can tell you that when the cones are here, traffic accidents are decreased.
I move we approve the request.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, you put a U-turn sign up, but if they follow the directions of the U-turn better, any, any better than they do the other directions out there, probably not gonna make a whole lot of difference, other than we write them a ticket. Maybe we need to put cones and a new U-turn sign up or something.
Well, the bollards are, will place the cones. Bollards are, you've seen them in the roundabout now. They're mounted in the cement and they go, they're permanent.
Sort of like what's in front of the hospital.
Yes.
Is that correct on 301?
But it, it is an issue. I will tell you, also have a meeting tomorrow with our, our contract engineer and DOT, and we're gonna talk about just these issues with the Crossroads Project and the way the traffic moves, see if we can come up with some alternatives.
I'll, I'll, I'll say. I'll talk to you later.
All right.
Any other questions, concerns? Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 168-536D1. The purpose of this is to solicit input from residents and property owners as to the needs of a downtown municipal service district. I'll turn that over to the manager.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, yep, and I will need a motion to open the public hearing.
Like a motion we open the public hearing.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This public hearing is for anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue. The North Carolina Statute 168-536 changed this year and requires us to hold a public hearing to seek input into retaining a provider for services in our municipal service district, which is our downtown. That is the purpose of this hearing. Anything presented at this hearing will be used to create our request for proposals, which we will be going out to ask for those entities interested who would provide that service for the town. So I would ask that anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue, let us know and be sworn in, and we'll, we'll come up.
Anyone like to speak for, or speak on, on this issue?
You have nothing further?
Okay.
What, what I basically see this, and correct me if I'm wrong, I did some reading here, but basically the, the state budget bill is requiring us to change our procedures on how we will handle this. We will have to solicit input from residents, property owners, and need to, as to the need of the service district. We'll have to use a bid process to select the private entity. Then we'll have to hold an additional public hearing, or is this that public hearing?
We'll have to hold one more hearing after that.
To, to go into an agreement for the contract.
Yes.
And then we'll have to have a annual report. We'll have to have a contract specifying the scopes of the services. And it'll be a five-year or less contract, and that basically is what I understand we're talking about tonight. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Mr. Harris.
And after we go through this one time, it'll be simple. I think they're trying to stand on-
I, I think we all understand. I mean, for some, if you guys have a question, I mean-
Any other questions? All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing.
I think we close the public hearing.
Second. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. No further action.
And we don't have to do anything as far as the motion you'll go forward.
We'll move forward with the RFP.
All right, council members' comments? Any comments from the council?
I would like to say just a couple of words regarding the STRAC swim team. Yes, don't know. Smithfield's swim team won, were undefeated this year. Out of what, seven or eight, eight teams in the conference from all over Johnston and Wake Counties, our, our team went undefeated and won the championship this past weekend at STRAC. And I just wanted to publicly say congratulations to them. Gary, if you will please, take it back to Laura that I've been to a lot of swim meets over the last five years, and I will say that that championship was one of the most well-run that I've ever seen. And I've attended them in Raleigh and Cary at some of the finest swim facilities in the nation. And I wanna say that the entire staff, but especially Laura, did an outstanding job. Gentlemen, there were, I don't know, there were probably 1,000 people there at STRAC that day. Parents, grandparents, coaches, team members, and so forth. And I just wanna say it was very, very well-run. Hats off to, to your staff, Gary, if you will please. Take that back to all of them. I would greatly appreciate it. Also, did wanna mention that Kelsman Scott was not able to be with us this evening. His grandmother passed away Sunday, so please keep him and his family in your prayers, please. Also, another hats off to our fire department and Chief Blanton, just for the positive- Also, another hats off to our fire department and Chief Planton, just for the positive things that I've been seeing coming out of your department. The little neighborhood events that you're putting on with the sprinklers and so forth, I think is just excellent. And it's just those little things, right, that everything that we do, every department head, every employee that we have is wearing the face of Smithfield. And people, you know, yes, you're on the front lines when you see people, just like our police officers are. Keep that in mind. Just those little things make people think the positives about Smithfield. And again, I could go on and on about the many good things that are going on in Smithfield, Mr. Manager, but I did want to give a shout-out to the fire department recently because you guys are doing a wonderful job as far as promoting Smithfield and the positive things that are going on. So just those little outreach things are great. So thank you.
I do have one thing I want to say. I think a lot of you know that there's been a beautification project in West Smithfield that I believe is completed now. Am I correct, Lenny? They've finished their work over there. There's still some more work on the south side.
Will we plan to freeze this fall?
Well, I want to let all the citizens know that I had a complaint recently about all the massive amount of weeds in the work that they have done so far, and of course, I immediately called Lenny because my memory was that the DOT or their contractor would be responsible for one year to maintain those. And of course, I immediately picked up the phone and called Lenny. Maybe I should have called Paul, but I called Lenny. And it doesn't really matter, but they were already on it. And so anybody that wonders about that, they are in the process of getting that taken care of, and hopefully we will. And at the end of the 12-month period, we will become responsible in the town. But I just wanted everybody to know that all the rain, I guess we had a few weeks ago, that the weeds grew really, really fast.
Well, and it's a very good point, Councilman Harris, is as we go through these efforts, just like the manager was saying, there are many pieces of this puzzle that we're trying to put together, and that's one. And again, I want to thank you for your hard work and efforts on that project, but with that being said, we also need to be thinking for next year's budget. As we do these, we have to budget additional funds to maintain these areas and keep them looking attractive.
Put that on the list to make sure that we evaluate that for next year's budget.
Mayor Moore, I had a few things, just to echo back on what Tony Nixon said. Thanks, everybody who came out for our fourth annual fund in the park, and it was a wonderful day. Also, thanks to interim chief Powell, Mr. Manager. I know the mayor was there at night at St. Peter's, disciple of Christ. The night, we had a little meeting, you know, dealing with law enforcement and everything. Probably had about 40 or 50 people that gathered at night, so definitely want to thank everybody on behalf of St. Peter's Church. And from that, I got with Lieutenant OB, and I know he has his coffee with the cops that he always does, maybe Wednesday from four to six over at the Johnson Central Alumni Center. You know, I kind of opened up the gym. I know Tim Kerrigan stopped by last week, Dale stopped by, and we just came up with the Kool-Aid with the kids. And there was probably about 30 kids in there that day, you know, they're shooting ball, running around, doing whatever, but we probably had probably about five or six police officers, actually probably more than that. It kind of scared me because I thought the whole police force was at the gym, and I was like, well, who's taking care of the town? But anyway, just, it was a great day. It was just, you know, a lot of positive communication, you know, with the police and everybody. And I mean, it was laid back and they was able to, you know, just pretty much ask anything, you know, no holes bar, just ask anything. We do plan to do more, might do it about once a month, you know, not every week, but therefore, you know, the kids can kind of get comfortable, you know, whenever they see the police, you know, riding down the street, they can say, hey, and, you know, they can stop and ask questions, so that definitely went well. Last Friday, I had a chance to go over to the Salvation Army. I got invited over there, and matter of fact, one of the ladies is here tonight, Ms. Maxine Hunter. I know we're at the Salvation Army, Major Carrie Booth, she's hosting a first-ever summer camp out there. There are 50 young kids out there, you know, underserved, underprivileged kids out there. And, you know, what kind of got me that day was just kind of hearing, you know, what's been going on this summer, you know, and I thought Ms. Booth was going to be here tonight, but she definitely did say that that group of kids have been going back and forth from Wilson all summer, and they probably spent $2,000 just to go swim because they were not welcome at the aquatic center. I don't know all the specifics of what went behind this, but to go back and forth, you know, and spending $2,000 to go to Wilson when we have a facility right here, you know, in our town, and also, you know, this is another reason I feel like, you know, that's why we need to have the pool open, you know, let it be another alternative. But, you know, it's a wonderful group of kids over there, wonderful staff. The camp is free and, you know, just kids, you know, just doing a lot of things. They learning, even about the Bible, they doing a lot of great things over there, but just to kind of hear that, that kind of infuriated me, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilman Lee, I want to thank you, first of all, for your involvement in putting the things together that you have done recently for our kids. You don't have to do that. You probably could spend your time working on other things, but I do want to say, you know, hats off to you for taking your time to organize those events. The fund in the park was a good event and, I think, worthwhile event, and so keep up that good work. As far as your comment on Salvation Army and not being welcome, Gary, can you address that? Can you? Sure, if you don't mind, please come up and let's...
I just caught wind of a little bit of this situation, a little bit over the weekend, and more so today and yesterday, and so I did check into it because we wanted to know, and we do welcome anybody and everybody to the aquatic center. Doesn't matter who they are, what part of the group they are. We do group swim Monday through Friday, starting at 10 until 4 o'clock. We start taking reservations in February, and from my understanding and talking with staff, the last spot filled up on May the 18th. The Salvation Army came to us on the 8th, was the first day that they made contact with us. That was the last day of school, and it was a half-day, and we accommodated them that day. We didn't have our summer schedule in place. It doesn't start until the next week, but we...
The 8th of what?
8th of June.
8th of June.
Yeah, that was the first day they had came, and we made arrangements to accommodate them for that day. Ms. Janika Howell came back to talk to our staff about getting additional time. We didn't have any, our calendar was full. I have the calendar for every day of the whole summer here, if you want to see that, and after the meeting, be more than happy to provide that. And she was told that, you know, we didn't have any space. If we have anything, any groups to cancel, any space comes open, we'd be more than happy to make contact with you and let you know that. We had a group council on July 1st. We made contact with them. They said that they had already had plans for that day and couldn't use that time. We also offered them time between 11:30 and 1:00, which is normally lunchtime for camps, and they didn't really want to do that because it did interfere with lunch. And I understand that, but that was the only time we have available. It's hard for us to overlap groups, to have more than one group, because if you have 50 kids in a camp and you have another group with 50 kids, that's 100 kids, plus you have your lap swimmers, we have our fitness classes going on at the same time, and we also have to have space for membership. So it gets crowded in the pool, and we got to maintain safety. That's our main... Once we get over 75 swimmers, we don't feel as comfortable as we do with larger groups. That's the facts that were given to me by my staff as we discussed it today, and so...
Gary, without getting into names, are these groups based in Smithfield? Is a priority given to Smithfield groups, or is it open to...
Well, it's open. It's open. We try to give priority to Smithfield groups. We want the Smithfield groups to be able to use the pool, but at the same time, we don't want to cut groups out, and we don't want to leave a space open if we can generate revenue. So it's a catch-22.
Do you have a sign-up period, say your initial sign-up period for Smithfield groups first, and then after you...
That's not, I'm not aware if we do that or not. I don't know exactly how, but I can check into that and find out. And if not, it may be something that we want to do next summer.
How do we get the word out?
Most of the time, the groups call us before we even have to put the word out. I mean, they start calling in January, and we have to tell them to call back. And a lot of them are repeat users and have used in the past.
Gary, would it be possible for us to put, I know Mr. Ham's here from the aquatic center, to make a note on our schedule to contact the Salvation Army along in the spring, touch base with them, make sure that as we're going forward, that we're including them and they're getting the good information.
Absolutely.
Great.
But this was their first year, so they probably didn't know.
And they may not have known, but it's not that we denied them access, it's not that we didn't want them there, it's that we were full, and, you know, there's always some circumstances behind every story, so...
Well, instead of the spring, I would make a courtesy call in possibly January.
Yeah, well, that's what I say in the winter time.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. I didn't even say that. So, all right, thank you, Gary.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman Lee. Any other councilman comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing. I know we've had a lot of departments get praised tonight, but I would like to thank the Public Works Department for an incident right outside my work the other day. Public Utilities, thank you, Ted. Stole Lenny's thunder right away, didn't he? But we had a...
You gotta watch Lenny.
Yeah.
Glory.
We had a telephone pull break, and within 30 to 45 minutes, y'all restored power so we could work and have air conditioning again. We really appreciated that that day, so again, thanks to you for all that you do and all the town employees do. I think that's probably the most important part of the town is the employees.
Exactly right.
I would like to say too, it's really not my place to thank you, it's somebody else's, and hopefully they will, but my youngest son was working on his Eagle project, and he needed the assistance of the town because there were going to be some holes dug in an area that may involve underground power lines, and also may have involved a ground that was probably too hard and too compact to dig holes. I hooked my youngest son up with the town manager, and he hooked my youngest son up with Ted, and Ted hooked him up with Rodney Johnson, and he didn't have to, but Rodney had some post-hole diggers and didn't need the auger, but Rodney, not that he didn't know how, but taught him how to dig a real hole. I do thank you. I assume my son John will be in touch with you later, but I really appreciate that. You talk about here again, building community and community relations. But my son was, by the way, my son was successful. He completed all the requirements for his Eagle Scout Award. He does have his board of review, and he was doing it at the last minute too because his 18th birthday was Sunday, so he had to get it done. So, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Any others? Okay. Mr. Manager, turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't help but see the theme tonight is good things are happening in Smithfield, a lot of positive things. We have churches working to fill the bus drive right now for underprivileged kids needing supplies to go back to school. Jamie Ford was here with James, another program, same type of thing. We had a motorcycle club that left, they were in the background, same issue. The Fraternal Order of Police running a campaign right now for book bags. And then, of course, the junior women's touch truck thing that's coming up. All great things for our young people, all things we should be very positive about. Councilman Lee talked about dedicating his time, and I know he does it on a regular basis. I see him over there all the time. Kool-Aid with the kids, with the police department. And then we have fun in the park that kind of is just the epitome of this community and how it outreaches to everyone. I couldn't be prouder to be a member of this community. It's a great place to live, work and play, and raise a family. Poor James has been a better trooper tonight. Can't say enough about him. So anyway, a couple of other things we can be proud about. Our finance director, Greg Seiler, informed me earlier this week that the town departments, all the people sitting right here who manage the money directly, allocated them through the budget process by the council, will be returning almost a million dollars to fund balances this year from last year's budget, money that we've been able to save and not spend. That helps us pay for that $700,000 venture drive project that Lenny Branch is working on right now, make sure that's done properly, fix that road. We heard some issues with the crime lately. We have seen a spike in crime. I can tell you that the interim chief and his people are working diligently on that. They've already made a couple arrests for burglars that were involved in not only our community, but other communities. When you see this type of thing, you don't see it unique to one area. Usually breeds over into the entire county and even into adjoining counties, and that's what everybody's been seeing. I anticipate it'll get itself under control and pull back about as quick as it moved up. I want to thank him for that. I want to thank our community for that because everyone needs to police themselves, and I think they do a good job of that here in Smithfield. I will note that the property at 116 South Fifth Street that we were given permission to purchase last year has been purchased. The planning department is working to put RFPs out so that we can get that property demolished and back down to ground level. The only other thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is the Pine Street buffer. I had mentioned that I'd try to do a presentation on that quickly tonight or bring some information back. We exchanged emails with Tony Nixon earlier last week. This is an issue that's been dragging on for some time. Councilman Lee's laughing because he knows I'm right. We did meet with Mr. Etheridge last week, Mr., our contract engineer and I. He has supposedly gone back to his partner to get permission for that easement. Unfortunately, our contract engineer wasn't able to make it tonight. He had surgery and some complicated, not really complications, but it prevented him from being here, so he can't report on it directly. But I will be providing a written report after tomorrow to the council. I'll email that to all of you as exactly where it is because I am to meet with him tomorrow on just this issue, as well as the issue that I talked about with DOT and crossroads Last thing is we, utilities department is starting the boring over on Market Street for the streetscape project and the lighting, so they may be seeing that underway as well. We hope to have that up and running prior to the holiday season. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All righty. Any other items? All right, we have closed session that we need to go in. I have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, Section A3, to consult with the town attorney. Motion in a second. We'll go into closed session at this time. Thank you very much.